Mayor, your signature?
Here.
Alderman Couch?
Here.
Alderwoman Zerwick?
Here.
Alderman John Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Openfish?
Here.
Alderwoman Brumfield?
Here.
Alderman Ross?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Please look at the agenda. Show me.
Second.
Third. Call the trailer?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. I hope we can go right into Martin's. On vacation this week, so I will go, I will try to cover a few things to talk about, and I prefer to talk about them now instead of other business. Noticed in the last week or so, paid particular attention to Fourth Street and thinking about the budget. I've talked to Martin, and I talked to him again today, and I've talked to Dave last week. Fourth Street out here, obviously, the most traveled street in town, and knowing that we're not going to be able to really do anything with it to do it right in next, this coming year's budget, or I'm sure probably in the following year's budget unless, for some reason, you know, Special Road District would end up giving us a whole lot more money, or we would end up with some kind of a windfall, I don't see it in 2014's budget, or 15's budget, really. Because, I mean, if you compare that street to, say, Rosier Street, if we're going to replace the sidewalks and put gutters which are needed on the west side, you know, up around Prunos and up in there by the farm field, that's easily a, easily a half a million dollar street, if not more than that. I think a half a million dollar would be good to do it from, from the four-way stop out to where the state starts. So, you know, maybe with the Tiff ending and the end of 2015, maybe you look at it in 2016's budget to be able to really do the street right. But if you look at it, it's cracking up really bad, and I've talked to Dave, asking to look at possibly chip and seal in it, or he suggested the microsealing of it, because we, I think we got a face, we're going to have to keep it together for a couple of years yet. And did talk to Gary Nelson, and they've, and Dave already has talked to the county also. They haven't put their stuff away yet as far as their oil and equipment, and the county did say that they would help us, be glad to help us out if we wanted to do that, the chip and seal part of it. Dave figures that the chip and seal would run to do from here out to there would run about $11,000. He did get a price on the microseal, and that was about $18,000. He was a little more, was leaning a little more towards the microseal because it would, and that's similar, or what we, not similar, is what we did in the downtown streets, I guess, was that last year? Whatever, it was last fall. That it would fill in the cracks better and hold them together a little bit better than what the chip and seal was. There were some, obviously, some downsides to both of them. I know we'll get a bunch of grief if we chip and seal it with the tar and people's cars and all of those things. If we do the microseal, the guy wants to do it during the day, and he says it needs to be closed for eight hours. So, we would have to detour people around, and we would have two businesses, the graphics place and Genevieve Farms, that we would have to, I don't know how you could accommodate them, the only thing I thought of was, at least maybe with the Genevieve Farms, is that you could, might be able to start early enough in the morning, where you could maybe do from the tracks on out, and where they could maybe stay open for, be open for a few hours in the morning before they had to do from the tracks into here. Pardon me?
They didn't want to do this one at night. I don't, I mean, they did that one at night. We did, we did it, run into actually having to keep it closed because it wasn't dry all the way in the morning, and maybe he wants to try to avoid doing that. I think we could work around, I said ideally if we could schedule it on a day where there wasn't school, or especially if we can't do that, start after, you know, right after 8 o'clock, so we could at least get that part of it done. But I wanted to, I think it's something that we need to, knowing budget-wise, we are going to end up with, Sue, I don't know if you want to, if you want to come up here and tell what, but we are going to end up with the 50, 50,000 or better, I think all the sales taxes in for this year, right? It's what you told me?
Yeah.
And we're going to be, it's 50,000 or around that, more, like we mentioned in the last meeting. So, we do have that, whether it comes in this budget, it probably still end up being billed in next budget, but we would either have it as an amendment to this budget, or a carryover in next year's budget to be able to pay for it. But it's something I think we really ought to do now that it's cooling off, or it is cooling off, and we don't wait too long, and would like to try to get done, but before the next meeting. So, I was just wanting your all's feeling on it, but I mean, if you, if you really look at the street, especially up by Prunos and up in there, it's spider webbing pretty bad and cracking up pretty bad. I don't think, if we have any kind of a rough winter, we're going to end up with parts of it starting to come up, and then I think we end up with a big problem. Again, I think it's going to have to last us another couple of years, just looking at the money.
I agree, we need to do something with Fourth Street. You know, that's our interest into the city, it's a bad street and everything, but are we happy with what was done downtown as far as?
Well, one thing that Dave did mention is, the guy mentioned that he does have to come back. He's never come back and patched a few things.
Right, he's never come back to patch anything.
He's going to do that.
No job will bring him back.
Well, that wasn't the, I mean, no, he's still committed to come back, but do it all at the same time.
I think that's because they did it.
I think he was talking about, he was actually, he was actually coming back, talking, I believe, to Dave about coming back and doing that next week, but, you know, and look at this.
Chip and seal was fine. I don't know if there's a lot of complaints with people that have tar on their cars. I mean, the one they did at Valley Springs, we didn't have any problem with any tar or anything.
I think that's the difference, is why we would be looking at trying to hold Fourth Street together for a couple more years. And the chip and seal probably wouldn't be as durable, even only over a couple of years. It's like Dick said, if we have any kind of winter, we got out freeze and thaw, a lot of movement, that other.
So, it just fills the cracks in there.
Is a little bit better.
Especially with the train that comes through.
I mean, we've done it the other streets, I mean, there's mother streets over international area, the streets that we chipped and sealed.
I don't know what they may have been before we did that.
And they, you know, they were in poor shape, the one in Valley Springs was in poor shape. It was quite.
We didn't have a rough winter, but yeah, the streets that we chipped and sealed are in pretty good shape, in my opinion.
Probably depends on the traffic is on them, too.
I don't know if the microseal was accurate.
Probably get a lot more traffic down here than we do.
The grass volume here.
What do you think about downtown?
Tell them to come back and make some patches and talk about it.
I think it was nice. I like it.
I think it's worked out pretty good.
Worked out good.
I love it. Now, I can't tell you for the spots that you said you patched that, I don't, I don't recall where they would be off.
There's a bunch of spots that they marked to be redone.
Do you think that we, because they did it?
They marked them, and the guy was supposed to come back, and he never did.
They did after.
Did you follow up with them? I wasn't on the board then.
Is he back up with jobs? Is that why you have to have?
Did you hold Martin Campbell to follow up?
They contacted the people a few times.
They did follow up. I'm not sure what's taken, why, why this is, why it's taken that long. I thought, I honestly thought that they came back and did it, but I.
Did they say?
He did also think, he also, he also said that when they recently, Dave also said that when they recently did some borings under the street for some fiber optics or some conduit under the streets, that they did do some borings here at the four-way stop, and that there's, there's concrete underneath this, and that's one of the reasons that this thing, that asphalt, to him, is sliding. He said he could, I mean, that's going to be pretty expensive to dig all that out, take it down, I mean, that needs to be done when the street is completely redone, but he said he could even this out a little bit better than what it is before we did it, just, you know, and that may last for a while before it would start moving again, because it's, I guess, from breaking or whatever, right here at the stop sign, it's.
Chester Brothers is right out on 32, and look how fast they did that. I wonder how expensive they are.
That's an overlay.
Well, they grinded, they grinded it up.
Chester Bros.
Bros, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I always say that.
It's roomy on that.
I always say that.
I'm not qualified to determine which, which treatment is better, and we're really focused on a minimum of a two-year patch, and maybe even longer than that. So, I agree, it certainly needs to be done, and we, I hate doing the patches, but I think this is one of those perfect examples where it really has to be done.
I, I think we've got to do something.
Well, I agree we should do it. Just make the right decision.
Whether we take it, I mean, we certainly would have the ability to use the funds we already have in Special Road District, that's what they're there for, we can use that. It's Bob and Peter to pay Paul, basically, but we could do, do it with that money or do it with our own, and let that money build up until we were ready to do a bigger project on the street. But I wanted to get your, yes.
The slurry sealed, did they do, like, in front of Presbyterian Church when he did it?
I don't think they went down that far.
That's pretty rough down there.
Well, it's getting broken up real bad, along with Market Street's horrible, too, and ended up losing Market Street yet, too. They ain't going to hold up this winter if we get a bad winter.
I thought they did that.
This company has to come back to do some patching. Do they, have they said anything? Do they think it's because they did it at nighttime, or is this just typical of what happened? Well, he said he never had to come back.
Okay, okay.
It was like the next day, and there were spots that they missed.
But what, but do they have, do they know why? Are they saying, well, we shouldn't have done it at night, if we did it in daytime, it would have been a different situation?
I believe it was because of night.
And it cooled, I think it was a cool night, too.
It was a cool night.
We might be able to avoid those things this round.
That's what happened.
Didn't set up bright.
Right, didn't set up bright.
And it didn't dry, but it was still wet.
I think, yeah, I think that was part of the problem, and I don't think maybe it set up, and we wore, we did, we turned, and maybe.
So, we may, we may go again and do this, and we may have a better outcome.
Obviously, we'd be able to see, see any issues better during the day, I'm sure, and it would set up faster during the day, especially if it's warm at all.
Is Saturday an option for them to work?
I don't know.
I mean, Genevieve Farms, I guess, her open town may be.
Probably just cost, probably just cost. I mean, they charge more work on Saturday, about that.
And I think if Genevieve Farms was notified in advance, they could notify their people in advance, hey, this is not going to be a good day, you know?
Well, and the other option is, could they do one side and then do the other side the next day? So, they could maintain some access, well, that either way, when you finally do this to that side of the street, they're, they're going to be locked off, so that didn't, that didn't work, it sounded better in my head.
The way it came out.
Will it set up that quick, or they can get on it the next day?
Eight hours, didn't he say?
He said eight hours, yeah.
So, if they started early, by 2:00, it could be done and ready to.
Well, in any case, if they did in front of Presbyterian Church, I'd like for them to look at it again, because that's horrible. I walked for two days at the cheer to thud down there. That street's really broken up bad.
I don't think they went down there.
I don't think they went down that far. It seemed like they went down.
They went down.
They went down Market farther.
Merchant.
They went down Merchant further, but I don't think they went down Main past Market, I don't think.
What did you think of that?
I don't know.
So, what's the consensus?
Again, it's, it looks like it's about seven, roughly $7,000 difference to do the one versus the other.
But we feel this, with the extra $7,000, that we're getting a better job, a job that's going to hold better, and.
They, they felt that it's, it would last longer than the chip and seal.
Or we could take the $7,000 and put it through to another street. Might make more sense. Patching's one thing, but half-patching, that's a, that's all no.
I don't know.
Like you, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't have, I'm not.
All I know is it's looking good on 10th Street, what they did a couple of years ago, and that's still holding up.
It didn't get much traffic though.
Oh, there's more traffic than you said.
There's a lot there.
Put a counter out there, once you might be.
Well, I'd probably just take your work.
Well, there's a lot of traffic, there's going to be a lot more soon.
Take that Lovers Lane there, Chadwell Lane, it cuts off some time, so.
That's the only other thing I got, is Chadwell Lane. It's in Darnitas and patching. There's a hole up around a curve that already cost two tires.
Oh, yeah.
When do they expect that to be done?
I got a plan about it, Randy, when this.
I guess my biggest concern is that, I don't know, the guy never did anything for a year to fix his problems.
I would be interested in our, that conversation, who had it with them, and how come it, how come it stopped?
We need to find out how reliable these people are, you know, since it took, I
mean, they probably never would have came back unless they had another job.
I, I don't know. I can't, I can't answer that. I think he did, I thought he told me that his plan was to come back here next week, anyway, but I don't know.
That's sad, you.
And I don't even know if he had that, if he knew that before I even called him and said, let's try to get an estimate on this. Seems like he knew that already.
Who's the expert on this?
How soon do we need to move with this?
I would like to do it, definitely before, I like to, before the next, get something done before the next meeting.
Well, tonight.
You know, within the next couple of weeks, where they still have warm days, and again, the county had to pull off because they had some other project to do, that's why, that's why they still got the equipment available.
What, county, what, ours, if even that, you can drive on it?
Uh, I don't even know, it's almost right away.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't shut Genevieve Farms and nothing down. I just hope that, and I wish I had some more input, that the cheapest is not always the best, and whatever the best value for the money that we do spend. And if, you know, I mean, you guys must have heard a lot about this before you approved it, it's been done last year.
Yeah, we worked on that before.
Chip and seal's probably more expensive.
By the time you have to re-chip and seal it?
Use your head. Chip and seal's probably more expensive when you figure that the county is letting us use their equipment.
Okay, but in this case, it's cheaper.
I was going to say, so, you're going to, what? It's 10,000.
Sue, we, we, we can come back this, without your help.
You know, the business, we come back, you can think about it, I'm going to see.
Jesus, that's what I'm figuring.
Then we'll get the discussion then.
What's that, Mayor?
I'm going to see if he happens to be around.
Are you passing these out?
And can come, we'll, we'll come back on regular, under other business.
Do that, Dave?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Oh, I see, one's got long windows.
It's okay.
You okay, Carl?
It's all, yeah, it's all unpacked, so you just kind of look at it.
You've got to share, pass it around.
Just share.
Oh, it's all one thing.
That's all one thing.
We get to share, what is it?
What you got there, that's a, a drawing of the Street Department building.
Oh.
Of the different elevations, and the one you see on the top is using horizontal siding, either cement board, or there's a new, another one that was recommended was a new steel coated siding that has a very long guarantee on it.
Is this going to go through the historical?
I, well, hang on. And then the other one, and then the one below is the, is just a vertical metal strong panel, like it's here, basically on metal building. That's the top, you know, that's the top view's the horizontal siding, the bottom view is the same elevation with the, with the vertical side.
Yeah, the.
We, you're also seeing one with windows all the way along it, and Dave had come up, Dave and, and his crew came up, suggested that maybe wall space is more important than all of the windows, that they might want some wall space in between the windows to hang stuff and do whatever, so we could eliminate some of the windows. So, you're seeing a bunch of different options there, just wanted to see what you thought. We haven't, we haven't ran it by landmarks yet, wanted to just bring it up today. We were, and we did some very rough estimates, we were allowed by the insurance company to repair the windows that are there, around $16,000. We're at a real rough estimate, is this is going to probably be at least twice that. But it's, I think we've got to take advantage of the situation and put the extra money into it. The vertical, the vertical type of siding is, is probably $3,000 or $4,000 less than anything we would do horizontally, because you, the other, we have to back up with plywood, the vertical stuff, we really just have to put purlings on there, and we'd still insulate it, and put plywood on the inside, but we would eliminate the need for the other plywood, and it would probably go up quicker than the horizontal stuff.
Is that steel, man?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, any, just to.
Cheapest, that's what I would think, so as long as it functions.
I think they could even get rid of some windows, too, you know, that would cut some cost.
Well, that was, really, the Street Department's suggestion was some light, they need some light, but cut out some.
Oh, we see that option, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if I would invest in it. I'm the big one, which is most cost-effective.
Yeah, I agree.
Cost-effective, less windows.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, we.
Okay, look, Andy.
Other update on that project down there, the cleaning company's been in, and they're done, and looked like they did a pretty good job. We've, we've got the pricing on the electric, and we're giving them the go-ahead today or tomorrow to start redoing the electric, and also to put up the new garage doors. Some of the cleaning, they couldn't clean, some of the walls completely, still had some, I didn't say soot, but they're still, it looked, it looked dirty, so he's getting a hold of some painters as far as coming in and doing some repainting of some of the stuff that they couldn't get off.
So, what is the, who's on the heat, the heating units?
They're planning on replacing, there's a plan. They're still hanging there, but they feel like they've got hot enough that they're, that they should be replaced.
Did they look into waste all versus what they got there now?
Um, it didn't, it didn't sound like we accumulate near enough to be able to mount to do anything with it. Dave, Sue did get a hold of Dave, and he's coming in so we can ask him some of those questions. Also, I do have a call into Tom, just for an update, to call into Tom Schulte of Senator Blunt's office, he had made some contacts with us concerning the condition of our post office, and I haven't heard back from him yet, although I just ended up making that call today, and he was at a meeting, so I haven't heard back, but anyway. Senator Blunt was going to try to put some pressure on from the top side to get somebody to get to do something with the flagpole and the gutters and the windows, and I think our post office doesn't look too good.
Need to be, yeah.
Keep them on that. Wow, that was clear. Well, while he's here, we'll just continue to.
You want me down?
Yeah. Thanks for, thanks for getting here so fast.
Can we get these back out?
First of all, the, the guy with the, the microseal, he was going to come back and fix downtown, I guess the question some of the people's got is, is why, why does it take any mess along to get?
They had a great big job down Louisiana, and it took longer than what they thought, and every time, I've called him like four different times, and I called him this week, and I said, you forget about me? And he said, no, it's going to be there next week. So, I told him, wait till tomorrow, because, well, after we talk, that, you know, see what you all decide, so, because if he would, if you do decide to do that, you can do it all at one time, so. I'm out of breath, I run out of breath.
When he does that there, is that just?
That's just patchwork, yeah, yeah, that's just patchwork. And I honestly think what happened is, that night they did it, it was so cold, because that night I wore a jacket, and very seldom I wear a jacket, and it was cold that night, so, I don't think it's set up like it was supposed to, because it took forever, so.
That's one of them, I'm thinking, if we get them again, during the daytime, it might have a different effect.
Yeah, it's, you know, because that oil, I mean, once it gets cured right away, it gets hard, but if you, if it's cold, it takes a while for it to, I mean, it'll get, it'll get hard, but it won't get sticky, you know what I'm saying?
Your, your argument, tell the board of the pros and cons of why you think that one would be better on this street.
Than chip and seal?
Than chips.
Uh, the reason why is because when you do the, it's called a microseal, it levels it out. There are so many cracks and stuff there, now, if you put oil on it, what they do is they come in and they just spray a little mist, and it doesn't fill the cracks in. Your rock goes on top of it, but you still got the cracks there. It doesn't actually fill the cracks completely up, so you're still going to have water infiltrate through there, and it's just, it's going to, you know, keep coming. I know that, you know, a lot of the other streets that we did, it's, you know, it's okay now, because they were really, some of them weren't as bad as these. And actually, a chip and seal is for basically good roads. It's not for bad roads, because it preserves roads, it doesn't, it'll give you a little bit longer life, but I'm using Progress Parkway, for example, it's got cracks in it, if you chip and seal that, that'll preserve it a little longer. It's not for bad streets.
But.
It, it's more of an oil on top of it, and it seals the cracks better.
In your opinion, Dave, we'd get better results from?
I would think, out here, if you're, you're planning to last another three to five years, I would think that the microseal would be better.
Did it microseal in front of the Presbyterian Church?
No, no, they didn't. I requested that, but I don't think it was in the budget, so, because I wanted to do that for that bike race, and then I think they didn't have the bike race after that or something, so.
How many, is that, you know, I don't know how many feet that is to add that to it. You know, we certainly got limited amount of funds, and where do you stop, but if, if that's something, then.
And of course, after I talked to him yesterday, the oil went up to, I think it was like 381, it cost us a square yard last time, now it's $4 a square yard, because the oil prices went up.
What, once you chip and seal a road, do you always have to chip and seal a road again?
No, you can actually go over it again, but.
I mean, you can go over it again, but once you start the process, you're going to use the same process?
Yeah, actually, you want to put more oil on it to get into the crevices in order for that rock to stick. And truthfully, we don't have the equipment, I mean, we've got this roller, but you're supposed to use a rubber tacked roller, and we don't, to make it get in there, the, oh, the armout and chat, it's got like a square side, I mean, a flat side on it, and it gets in there, and it kind of, you know, sticks in, and better like pea gravel, a lot of people use pea gravel, but it rolls, so, you can buy the cheaper rock, you can buy, I'm not cutting tar rock down, but they got softer rock, and it'll be a dusty road.
What we used was fine, and like John said, Penn Street's still looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Going into Valley Springs.
But actually, 10th Street.
But we had one in Mountain, our last one.
Yeah, and 10th Street really wouldn't, I mean, it was still in decent shape, I mean, it had a few cracks in it, but nothing like up here.
So, it was worse than Alpeir, with all them semis, and that is worse than Fourth Street.
Yeah, but the only trouble is, John, is most of our streets doesn't have a base under it. That's what, you know, trash trucks are tearing streets up.
But I'm looking at two, closing Genevieve Farms down for one day, where we have to open them right back up, we're chip and seal.
And we save what, something like $8,000?
Now, we don't know that we save, and we just know it costs that much less. There's a big difference, and saving costs less.
Yeah.
So, how much is it for chip and seal? So, how much is it for chip and seal? It was eleven and eighteen, basically, is what we-
It'd be around between ten and eleven thousand dollars to do the chip and seal for the oil and the rock.
And the microseal is?
Yeah, it's around, he said eighteen, so.
I think if you really talk to Genevieve Farms-
Costs seven thousand dollars less.
Yeah, and it's one thing, once they start it, they gotta finish it because they can't really stop. Because they've got the stuff in their truck and, you know, they're not gonna clean a truck out that night and start over again tomorrow. I mean, I know it's an inconvenience to them, but, I mean, maybe we talk to them, you know, maybe they wouldn't mind having a paid holiday.
Well, Dave, I don't know how much time it would be involved, because I know it doesn't take a real long time-
No.
-putting that down, but, you know, anything they can do for the tracks to, to there and they could be open in a couple hours.
Since that's such a straight shot, I'd say probably two, two and a half hours, they'd be done. Because basically what they do, the truck just drives and it lays it out and they got this gunny sack behind it that smoothes it out.
Yes.
Then it's done, until it cures.
If we only started at eight, they opened at seven, maybe by nine, I don't know if a couple hours would help them.
You still can't drive in that slurry, though.
No, what I'm saying is, they could be open from seven to nine and then close. They could at least be open some that day.
I mean, I'm sure we give them a few days' notice that, you know, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, you know.
But they do it on Saturday, don't they?
We could ask them, but I'm sure it's gonna be more, you know, because they're gonna have to pay their people overtime.
And Dave, even if they do have that street open for Genevieve Farms there, is there a weight restriction? Because you know they bring in those big grain trucks and different things, is that gonna cause problems if they bring in those heavy trucks? Are we gonna have to limit weight traffic on this?
How does a microseal hold up?
Well, it's, it's been holding up down there, other than the patches that, you know, that didn't stick. You know, you got tractor trailers going down Savanias all the time, so.
But even right away, after they do it, it will-
Yeah, as long as they don't turn their wheels on, I mean, if they get on before it's really cured.
Get some more traffic in.
That's what they did on the yard, it was so cold.
Yeah.
And we can always call Genevieve Farms and be like, "What's your slow day?"
Well, and then like I said, we had the post office on us because they, you know, they had to get the mail out and that hurt a lot.
And just ask them whether they're slow day this evening.
You guys chip and seal, it looks great and everything, but you still feel that little water holding under there. Where you're sitting, the microseal-
It levels itself out.
Should level that out more and you're not gonna get as much effect.
Yeah, when you chip and seal, you lay the oil down and then you have a truck right behind it.
Yeah, and that's what I saw on Lynn Drive, great job, but we still have that.
Yeah, if the-
It doesn't correct that problem.
Yeah, I mean, if he's starting and stopping, you know, he's gonna leave a little mound there and we're still picking up rock.
And we have a lot of these trucks on Lynn Drive now, too.
Yeah, and we're still picking up rock on Lynn Drive.
So, are we ready to make a decision?
When, do you still know where the patch spots are downtown where we slurried before?
Pretty well, yeah.
Can you still see them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And do you think they'll bring a machine in to do that or can they do that by hand?
Well, they, they came down, the first time was gonna do it by hand. And then there was a miscommunication between his workers and the guy, because he said they was done and I said, "No, you're not." And the guy said, "No, we gotta have the machine." Because, you know, it was, they thought it was a little bitty spots, but it was some big spots, so. And now it's actually worse, so. But he, he said he could come back next week to do it, so. So, that's why, like I say, if you're gonna decide this, which either way, it's up to you guys, but if he's gonna be here, he can do the whole thing. But that will fill the cracks in a lot better and seal it better than what chip and seal will. Because they're only putting so much oil down. And with that, like, it's basically like a gunny sack, it'll level it out.
So, what's, what do you think?
What do you think, Mayor?
Looking at our income, I, I think, I think it's gonna have to last probably for three years.
Or more.
Or maybe more. Again, we don't know what's gonna happen with the TIF revenue there, but once they're handed out for that, I, you know, that will be a shot in the arm to the budget at the same time. It's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be, to do it right, it's gonna be an expensive street, so.
It's a tough decision, Dave, we would go the way the streets is falling apart.
Yeah. I, I don't know, I kinda like the idea of, of making it as even as we can and trying to make it last as long as we can, so I kinda like the idea of the microseal probably better.
That makes for a good job, it looks good, too. I think for the, for the additional cost is really not very significant. A dollar's a dollar.
Better value.
But if we're rolling the dice, trying to get three years more, I'm gonna listen to our guy in town who knows about this stuff and follow Dave's recommendation.
Well, nothing, you know, if we do do the chip and seal, then it means we're gonna have to be out there and we're gonna try to have to fill in the cracks in everything and we're gonna disrupt traffic for a lot more than one or two days. I mean, we, you know, and that's an additional cost that, you know. This way, it's interrupted for one day instead of-
You still have to patch the deeper holes, right?
Yeah.
And you're gonna try to even this out the best you can before they can do it out here.
The big hump there?
Yeah.
Depends on when you have them do it.
Well, I mean, we can-
I mean, we can always come back and try to do that after they're done, but, I mean, because you're not talking that much of a, of a space there, I mean, we're talking ten foot?
Probably.
Yeah.
I mean, to you, that's a day or so.
Yeah, I mean, but like I say, if you can, if you can get these people to come in, if we have to tear what they did up for ten foot to put new asphalt there, I mean-
That's true.
There's no sense in having them wait and then going any longer, because we are running into cold weather.
Dave, on your cost estimate for chip and seal, does that include anything we would have to reimburse the county and all your labor numbers and?
Basically, the county donates their, their equipment and we just pay for the oil and the rock, so.
So, in your number, that include labor?
No.
So, right there's another-
Yeah.
Several thousand dollars.
You're gonna have to go back and do sweeping and all that.
Oh, yeah, and then like I said, with chip and seal, we're spinning-
I think we're getting closer to being a wall.
I think we are, too.
The county provided a little bit of labor last time, would you presume?
They actually provided all the labor.
Okay.
You know, we tried our truck, but it wouldn't work. And then the sweeping part of it, we, it just wears them brooms down, so we're talking, you know, at least a hundred bucks for a set of brooms, so.
That's something else we need to think about, if we don't chip and seal this year, maybe the county will forget about us next year. It'd be nice to keep that relationship going somehow. Not necessarily out here, but somewhere else.
Another place, yeah.
I really think the county's gonna be okay this year with us because they're so busy right now that they had to stop doing chip and seal to do other things and, you know, like I said, they're running, most time by now, they have their equipment cleaned up, so.
Okay, so, Mayor's recommendation is microseal, your recommendation is microseal?
I think it would be best, yeah.
I think we should go with the microseal, so.
I don't have a problem with the microseal, but Mayor, I think you need to give them a talk, too, about waiting a year. I think that was ridiculous, to wait a year to get that fixed down.
I mean, just because they're in there.
Tennessee, that's no column hours.
Like I said, I contacted four different times, so.
Well, they should have been more responsive.
That's right. Well, I think we just need to make sure they don't get a check until they're done this time.
Right, absolutely.
And we need to communicate to the, to that company that nobody signed a check until there's been a walk-through everywhere and everybody's happy and you don't have to come back.
I think.
Microseal.
All right, thanks, Dave. Anything else while you're here? Anything about the-
Shop, no.
I think they liked the building, they liked the vertical siding with the less windows. You haven't seen the one with the less windows, but-
Uh, no, but I'm happy with whatever you decide.
Okay.
I've got really many windows, just some for ventilation, some light, you know, and-
Well, actually, the less, less windows.
The company finished up today cleaning, so, and they did an excellent job, excellent job. I wouldn't want to have to do what they had to do. Man, that was a mess, so. ServiceMaster, they did an excellent job.
Good. Mayor, were you gonna mention that part down by church that John brought up?
Um, Dave, maybe, maybe measure that and just see if-
Well, you need to look and see if that's any worse than Market Street. Market Street might be worse than down there.
You tell me what to measure and I'll measure it.
I'm just saying that Market Street's long been back, Commissioner Nelson's been talking for years that we're gonna mess around and lose Market Street. I know we can't do them all, but you're gonna lose that street.
One thing with, look down there on, on Main, but if that's where we're, I don't know if, if we can not reroute traffic through there. Guess you could come up Gabbury and hit second, yeah, because you're talking to do it at the same time.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend because that's, how would you do that? You know, because they're gonna have to go around and come up and, yeah.
Around seven.
So, they're gonna have to go that way because they can't come up here on Gabbury unless they go around, you know, Front Street and-
Well, if you didn't go all the way- If you didn't go all the way under the trestle, you'd come up-
Yeah, we'll have molten fuse in, so.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thanks for running over here so quick.
No problem.
Okay.
I hope you get a workout for the night.
She had overtime for that.
You got a free workout.
Um, let's see, I think that's all, that's all that I have. Any, um, committee reports?
Real quick, Channel 7, 98, we had a meeting August 27th. Very proud of our youth videographers, they held a bake sale, of course, we all helped with it. They raised six hundred twenty-two dollars and ten cents to buy some of their own equipment. I think that's a big pat on the back to those kids for doing that. They also were awarded the best decorated youth float in the fair parade, how about that? Uh, we're very busy with videos, of course, football season has started, I guess you all know that, so we're busy with that. We wanted a big thank you to Bob Weiss's son, Kyle, because he's the one that keeps our homepage, our feature videos and everything updated and changed automatically. He's worked on that and if you've looked at our internet stuff, I think you'd be very pleased. We're getting a lot of good comments from viewers on how things are going with that. Thanks to everybody, too, for our total info, we're covering now through February of 2014, so, starting in March of 2014, if you wanna be a sponsor for that, it's a hundred fifty dollars a month and you can have your ad on there for the total month. Um, oh, I don't know, several things going on, everything seems like it's running along pretty smooth. We, we're in need of a couple of new cameras and I think Bob Weiss is checking into those for us, as well as some tripods, so. Our next meeting's gonna be September 24th at 6:30, so come down and see us.
Okay. On that, just on that, just an update, Pam's been trying to get the committee together to talk about our fire, our fire apartment issues or the, and it's just been trying with kids and sports and trying to get everybody together. She's trying again for, with the MML conference next week, she's trying to get everybody, see what, the week after this coming one looks like, to get everybody together, so we're gonna try that again. Okay, I guess we'll go to the minutes of the August 22nd meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay, old business, bill number 3937, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed from the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri to the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation, including the granting of easements provided therein. Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig, yes. Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brumfield? Yes. Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Okenthus?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero no's. Bill number 3937 now becomes ordinance 3878.
Okay, thank you. Bill number 3938, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri to accept a quick claim deed from the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation. Alderwoman Brumfield? Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig, yes. Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Okenthus?
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero no's. Bill number 3938 now becomes ordinance 3879.
Okay, thank you. Bill number 3939, second reading.
An ordinance to create the inmate security fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman John Stupi?
What? No, obviously. Do you want them to talk again or not? No.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Okenthus?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Brumfield? Seven, yes, one no. Bill number 3939 now becomes ordinance 3880.
Okay, thank you. New business, bill number 3940, first reading.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August 12th, 2010.
Move to approve.
Second.
Just a question, I think they, they started out and after discussions with them, I believe the increase was, we were looking at around a three percent or around a three percent increase and I believe this ends up being like a 2.8, is the right statement?
Yes.
All in favor, first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Bill number 3941, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2013 budget relating to the federal levy fund number 45.
This is the, which we've talked about a couple meetings ago, as far as going ahead with the, the next step, where we were at with the levy and this is basically given through the authority to write the check to send to them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, bill number 3942, first reading.
An ordinance approving the budget for the city of St. Genevieve for fiscal year 2014.
Move to approve.
Okay, all, discussion, yes, sir.
I got a question on page 29, across the bank fund. I see for the contract, the city's supposed to pay them thirty-nine thousand for the salaries and operations and everything, plus give them eight thousand. Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, like, is this money, I know the expenses have gone up and everything and what we're giving them is the same amount as we-
Well, this is just what's in the budget. When is, when is their contract up for renewal?
It's in February.
So, that would be the discussion would be in as to all those things.
I'm just questioning if we got enough money in there to cover what we say we're gonna give them. Because they don't spend eight thousand dollars as far as grants, they spend about four thousand, which they're under the impression that, oh, they give us four thousand and we're supposed to be giving them eight thousand. So, I'm just wondering, if that eight thousand was included in the amount that we budgeted for that.
I mean, thirty-nine thousand was their contract for the year?
Right.
And then the additional-
So, those, those items would be in their contract?
Isn't.
And I think it's gonna be an interesting discussion when we start looking at their contract and considering to renew it.
That's an addition to their contract.
Well, the contract says thirty-nine, but they're spending forty-seven, so.
Pardon me?
The eight thousand's in addition to their thirty-nine.
Yeah, but I'm just, their, their contract, there's more money that comes in on the tax Yeah, but I'm just, their contract, there's more money that comes in on the tax than the bank gets in their contract or that 8,000 dollars. And that money can only be spent on the van.
So, in charge of it.
And we're using about 4,000.
So, it's available if they needed more.
Yeah.
And he's, I think what he's saying is, we're spending about 4,000 now on grants per year. You're thinking we should do the full eight?
Well, I should, I mean, I think we should be giving them the full eight, which we don't. And my question was, was it built into the budget this year to give them 8,000 dollars?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
So...
Okay.
That's all we have to know.
How does it happen that we don't give it to them?
I have no idea.
Why would they give us?
Yeah, so they're not trying to spend that 8,000, they're only trying to spend 4,000. Is that the actual case?
That was the actual...
Yeah.
And what you're saying is we should be spending more, we should try to spend more than that. Sometimes...
We should spend what the city has given us because, uh, I mean, personally, I think we should be giving to organizations that are providing entertainment.
I agree.
More money.
So, you're saying they should use the grant money more or use the rest of the money towards the grant?
And I wasn't sure that money was built into the budget, but so, so that was my question.
The way that works, you don't really know because it's a, it's a four process and you may not have, you may not have as many people apply for it as some years as other years.
Well, that's maybe a discussion for another time, the way they can those grants out.
Right.
How they determine how much they will grant, how much they won't grant.
I had the impression they thought they didn't have the 8,000 and they only had 4,000.
We'll have a great issue with that later.
That's what they were basing the grants on, because the people are asking for more money and they were giving them less because they thought they had less.
Not always. It just depends on what, who applies and how many.
We're getting some transparency.
That's a whole...
One's the application deadline, you know how long that takes.
Well, actually, our next meeting, we should have a meeting this month, so.
Okay.
Move to approve.
We'll talk about that.
This is not the budget, it's already been...
We already got it?
It's not, we're not, we're not...
That was a discussion.
Remember, just again, as I mentioned the last meeting...
Teddy just had a discussion comment on that.
And we decided that we will go ahead and adopt the budget the way it stands and the way it's written, but, you know, the sales tax looks favorable for this year, that we're gonna have a better carryover and if we left it the same and sales tax even stayed flat for next year, it could be a hundred thousand dollar swing. So, we'll deal with that next month when we start talking about projects, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any public comments? And then under business, I did miss, uh, forget to mention, under administrator's report, uh, we did, with Lucet Windows, the new window company, uh, we did spend over a week hauling material out. I believe it ended up with our dump trucks. I believe it was over 100 loads of ours that we spent out there. I think we only ended up with one flat tire on the, uh, on the back hole, but, um, and I think the county hauled some and I believe special road district did, too. But I think we're done. I've been out there, it looks a whole lot better than what it did. And, uh, we're cleaning the place up, so. I know they appreciate it. I don't know that we counted on doing quite that much, but, uh, it's done, so.
And the town's excited they're coming?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Have they started taking applications?
Yeah, it's in the paper. There's a post office box, 72. Anything else under other business? All right, we just got...
One thing, real quick. I had, um, concern from, a citizen asked me about Leon Field Parking. Um, if there's any way we can put an additional parking lot on the side closer to where you're...
The county is going to do that. I don't know if they have plans of doing that yet this fall.
Because of the access down that hill, there's a lot of people that have trouble making it down that hill, walking around and getting more on flat ground.
Commissioner Nelson has said, I believe he has plans of even trying to put a sidewalk from that point up to maybe around the bleach area. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but...
So, the county will be taking care of that?
He's definitely planning on putting that parking lot in, yeah.
Is that on your property, Mayor?
That wasn't easy for us.
We had to locate the corners and, uh, he...
You need to talk a little harder.
He's planning on doing that this fall, yeah.
Hey, Dick, one thing I got, could anything be done over there by Dr. O'Donnell Rowgey's building? The doctor building and the building next to it where they got that ditch where people run off? Can there be some poles and guide wire or something put up there?
It needs to be closed in.
You told my right to get on.
Is that their property?
Is that their property or is that six?
Is that their property?
I don't know, we'll check it out.
I don't know, I agree.
I just always assume that's gotta be their property.
I thought it was, too. But we need to find that out.
Do we got a bunch of water, we do, we, does that neighborhood have a whole bunch of water going down through there? I mean, I, I, you know...
No, just people driving off into that ditch there.
I mean, but is the ditch, obviously, is for storm drainage, that's draining the whole neighborhood.
When he puts one building... In the property, right?
Well, it's right there.
Well, between the two buildings, yeah.
Yeah.
People think it's a turn in there and they driving right...
It's a chance there may be their property, but, uh, I don't know, there's odd places around the cities.
And if it's, uh, if not, and it's an issue, we, I think, does the hospital own both those buildings?
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
We can certainly have it. If it's not ours, or we check that out, we'll see what, they'll probably be cooperative to do that. Anything else? We got a street closure request from the St. Genevieve Lions Club for Backstopper's Rally on Sunday, September the 29th.
Move through.
Second.
What was that, Pam? Was that in here or what? Markets from Third Street to Main and Second Street from Market Street to Market Street. Thank you. Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion adjourned?
Move adjourned.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?